Good evening. I'd like to call this special meeting forty county commissioners to order. And if you'd stand and join me for the pledge, please. And Lauren, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the universal with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And the purpose of our special meeting tonight is for review of the proposed budget for 2022-23. Then we will start with the Park County Clerk's budget message.
Thank you, Chairwoman Olmertfield. We are pleased to present the Park County Fiscal Year 2223 Budget pursuant to Wyoming Statute 164109 and at the direction of the Park County Commissioners. The budget is comprised of suggestions, requests of elected officials, department heads, boards, and organizations, and the public. It is combined effort with the Board of County Commissioners, staff in the Clerks and Treasurers Office. I would like to thank all those involved for all your help in this year's budget session. I'm just going to highlight some of the things the full budget is can be found at parkcounty-wy.gov. Financial policies and goals for fiscal year 2022-23. The main goal for the Park County Board of County Commissioners is to ensure that expenditures do not exceed projected revenues. Special funding is provided for community service organizations. The total amount this fiscal year is $259,500. Park County provides funding for four separate boards. The total for them four boards is $2,294,972 this year. The general fund revenue projected for the coming year is $25489,090. General fund budget request for fiscal year 23, total $29,505,330, $29 million, excuse me, 505,334. Park County's overall tax revenue from the assessed valuation increased from $7,515,536 for FY '22 to $10,495,622 for FY '23. The Buildings and Grounds Department is entrusted with facility maintenance and ground care for all the properties owned and operated by Park County government. This year, we were able to upgrade our HVAC controls for the law enforcement center and replace several HVAC units at the annex to make the systems run more efficient and cost effective. The installation of the new carpet on the main quarters of the courthouse was completed. Our goal for this new fiscal year is to upgrade the HVAC controls and air handlers for the Park County courthouse and the public works facilities. Solid Waste Division of the Park County Public Works Department manages solid waste landfills near Cody, Clark, and Powell. The Board of County Commissioners, City of Cody, City of Powell, Town of Matizzi, and at least one large local waste hauler has agreed in principle to a reduced effective rate of $65 per tonne with everyone else paying 70 per tonne for waste received for disposal at the Park County landfills. Park County Road and Bridge System is comprised of more than 600 miles of roads and 69 bridges. Park County has some substantial road and bridge related capital improvement projects planned for the fiscal year. Willwood Road major improvements, Green Creek Road improvements, County Road 7RP realignment. Park County also participates in FEMA, FLAPP, and this year, TAP, which is Transportation Alternatives Program. Park County operates and maintains an enhanced 9/11 system for the public safety dispatch. Park County collects a 75 cent monthly surcharge tax on every local wireline and wireless telephone device in the county. Presented herein is the Park County Fiscal Year 2223 Budget. It is a true reflection of the goals and financial policies established by the Park County Commissioners for this fiscal year, and it represents a balanced approach for the operation of Park County in providing services to its residents. Again, I'd like to tell you this is available at parkcounty-wy.gov.
Thank you. First, any questions from the commissioners for Colleen to start? With that, I'd open the public hearing on the budget. If you would like to speak or make comments on the budget, proposed budget, if you would please state your name for the record, appreciate it. Anyone have comments? Yes, sir.
I have a letter I'd like to read to commissioners.
Your name, please.
Dale Jensen.
Okay, thank you.
I also wanted to ask a few questions about the budget.
Okay. Yes.
So which would you like to fit two first?
Whichever way you'd like to start, sir.
I noticed that there's a 74.5% increase in elections. And I must have missed something in the paper. I'm not sure what that's about.
We didn't have elections in last year's budget because there was no general election in last year's budget. Happens every other year.
And the next one was land and environmental issues, 139% increase.
Yes, we are budgeting to move forward with the rules and regulations following the land use plan, which will take probably another consultant or at least putting out for a consultant, whether it's another one or not, I don't know. But we did budget to get that process started in the next year.
And then the congressional tour, I wasn't quite sure.
Commissioner Teal, if you'd like.
The congressional tour is something new to the state of Wyoming. It's where we'll bring, it's going to be in working with the WCC Wyoming County Commissioner's Association, all 23 counties in the state, and we broke the state into five different areas. The first pilot program is going to be in the Big Horn Basin in next month in August, which includes Park County, Big Horn, Hot Springs, and Waskey County. And what we're going to do is bring legislative staffers from different parts of the country, mainly specific staffers sitting on committees back in Washington that have direct effect to things that happen here in Wyoming. And with that, we fired a consultant. The whole congressional tour is being funded by all 23 counties along with 50% funding from the FERPA Fund from the state for expenses. We're hoping to bring in the first year, 10 different staffers from various areas around the country and basically spend a week touring the four counties here in the Big Horn Basin, highlighting the three major industries, tourism, agriculture, and energy. In the, there's a longer version, but in a nutshell, that's what it is. So Park County's contribution to that, I believe, is around $1,200 and a whole lot of time. I can tell you that.
Thank you. A question on the reserve fund. Is it pretty much, I didn't understand where it said 15 million and then there was a minus 10 million.
So our reserve fund is not changing. What's happening is the PILT check comes in, payment in lieu of taxes, basically for Forest Service funds, comes in at the end of the year. It goes into that account and then gets rolled back into the budget. And so it went from the 13 million to the 15 and then back into the budget.
So when that comes back, we'll have a total of 15 million?
No, it will stay at the 13 million in reserves. It won't go back up. No. 13,600 and something.
I guess there was anything I needed to understand. It looks like the budget increased like three and a half million for this year. And you have four million being carried over in cash.
Yes, there were quite a few things that we ordered, and Mr. Palma is okay to go into this a little bit more, but there are multiple things on last year's budget that we had in the budget that did not happen. Large equipment pickups, things like that that didn't come in. So the funds that had been set aside in last year's budget to use for those were rolled forward into this year's budget. So that's part of those funds. Is there?
There was.
Use the mic, please.
There were, I think, five sheriff's vehicles plus all of the equipment that goes along with them, lights, decals, everything, and numerous heavy equipment for road and bridge graders. I can't, I don't know the detail, but it was a couple, close to $2 million. We just didn't have the availability to purchase. They weren't out there to purchase. A couple, they could pick up for road and bridge was out there also. Just a lot of stuff that was not available last year. Yes, sir.
Okay, let me answer my question. I did see there was quite a few increases in certain categories. Nothing of alarm to me. Some of them I understood. I had to ask a few questions.
That's fine.
Again, my name's Dale Jensen. I live in 953 Road 6 in Powell. And I know Joan Tilden's pretty familiar with me. I haven't been here with the new commissioners. What I'm getting ready to request. But I started in 1988. It's 2022, spent 34 years in asking the county to upgrade Road 6 to 89 and lane 10 in Powell. Chip seal pavement. Spent a frustrating time requesting with no results very much time. I have a file for about two inches thick of correspondence, commissioners, engineers, and I've been through quite a few engineers. And most of them saying, just not enough money to do. Well, in 2019, Brian Edwards and myself had a meeting in his office with my request of chip sealing Road 6. He finally said he would put me on, put Road 6 on a five-year plan. It's now almost five years later, so I'm asking the commissioners to support and encourage Brian Edwards with the finances he needs to complete Road 6 upgrade of chip seal pavement, fulfill his five-year plan. Historically, Frank Page was able to chip seal the first 300 feet of Road 6 off lane nine. But then he ran out of money and then he retired. We never got to finish. There are 11 residences all within a half mile stretch on Road 6. Now, before I get into Brian's letter, I wanted to read this, why it's important to fulfill this request. First, safety and health hazards for property owners and others riding on Road 6. Whenever it rains, the road becomes very muddy and slippery, and it leaves potholes and ruts from drivers. And anybody that wants to go down and drive on it, you can see they're still there. My wife almost slipped into a large drain twice this past year, driving only 20 miles an hour. Right after it rained because the road was such poor condition. When the wind starts to blow, the road becomes washed for rippled shape vehicles so rigorously. When you drive on it, you wonder if you're going to make it or the vehicle. We have several seniors living on our road who have back problems, and they usually let me know how bad the road is for their health. My wife just got through with her back surgery and complains of the vibrations every time she drives through. There's been a consistent comment from all business people delivering services and goods to our home. When are you going to hit the county to fix your roof that is in such bad shape and chases our vehicles to the floor, as well as shaving all of our products out of the bins? The second thing I'd like to talk with you about is the fair market value differential in frontage property listings for unpaid and paid roads. I visited with Pat Meyer recently, county assessor. He introduced me that he uses a formula, valuation of comparative property, which does not take in paid or unpaid roads. Therefore, I pay the same amount of tax as another who has the luxury of living on a paved road. The taxes on my property have gone up 45% this year, and I would guess so is everyone else's. There seems to be enough money to complete many projects this year. Third, I'd like to ask the commission to please support the county engineer with the finances he needs to upgrade Road 6 with a chip seal pavement. I did get this letter from Brian. He basically says, as I mentioned during our last meeting, anything in our office prepares and provides are merely recommendations regarding capital road and bridge related improvements. All final decisions regarding these matters are determined by the Board of Park County Commissioners. And as you would expect, these needs are constantly changing and evolving, so the enclosed plan is no means written in stone or enforced by the BOCC. And this is an internal draft proposal, Brian's got us down for 2024. I'm asking the commission to consider, since we have a little bit of surplus of money here, possibly have to help Brian with the extra money to take to upgrade that road to a chip seal. And I've been asking for 34 years. I'm sure like the one of these days before I die. I was hoping if Brian would be here.
I think so.
I was going to ask him to give kind of an approximate valuation on how much it costs to do that. But I guess you'd be able to check the thing. Maybe for listening.
Thank you very much. We do have the notes. We'll check. Anyone else that would like to speak?
Bob Ferguson, 4945 Highway 120, Matizzi. For a frame of reference, before I moved to Park County four years ago, I was on a seven-person board in my previous location in Connecticut. Don't judge me for that. That did the budgeting for our entire town. It was an $80 million annual budget. The seven-person board was elected board, just like you guys. The seven-person board handled every budget for the entire municipality. So I know what I'm talking about when I'm looking at budget issues. Now, over the five-year period that I was on that budget, the highest increase we had in any single given year was 4.65% and generally 3% and under. Now, the way Wyoming is structured and the way Park County is structured is somewhat different. This municipality had virtually 100% of their revenues based on property taxes. But what we didn't do was look, was to allow property tax valuation to control the budget. Here, basically, and I'll be honest with you, this is probably the first year I've looked in depth at this budget, but I am completely shocked that Park County or that any county in Wyoming would base their budget solely on revenue and not based on need. What we did, you know, when I was managing budgets for five years for this municipality was we adjusted budgets, and that also included a massive schoolwork budget, which you don't have in here. That was about 80% of the expenditures for that county, for that town. But what we did was, we managed everybody's individual budgets down to an acceptable level, and then the mill rate adjusted every single year. The mill rate was a fill-in. We knew what the assessed value was. The mill rate was basically a fill-in. Now, I know that there are state statutes that set a maximum mill rate in Wyoming of 12%. What I see in here is a budget that not only, I think, is completely irresponsible because this budget is 16.75% higher than the budget in the last fiscal year, 16.75%. Now, people say, oh, well, fuel's going up, oil's going up, all costs are going up. Yeah, year-on-year inflation is eight and a half percent. Okay, it's half of what the increase in this budget is. Now, I've already heard a little bit about, well, we've got five sheriff's vehicles that we didn't buy. We put off the purchase for. We've got other, you know, heavy equipment purchases that we put off. The idea that you're lumping, you're having to have one lump sum purchases for equipment, for capital equipment that depreciates is totally the wrong way to budget. Now, what we did was, we set up a fund for every capital equipment item. When you had, and we did the budget for the police department, we did the budget for the sheriff's department, for the fire, well, I'm not sheriff's department, for the fire department, because we didn't have sheriff's department. But what we did was, we created a fund, and every single year, we put a portion of the budget into that fund so that knowing when your vehicles were going to sort of reach their useful age and knowing when those vehicles were going to have to be retired. You had a fund that had been built up for five or seven years, and then you could take from that fund, retire one of those vehicles, but you weren't paying for the entire purchase price of vehicles or capital equipment. I mean, I'll be honest with you, this, in my mind, after doing it for five years, this is not budgeting. This is looking at the revenue stream and allocating, spending. And just to look at a couple of things, I mean, you know, we've got, because of property tax revaluation that we had, you got a $3 million increase in property tax revenue. You got an $800,000 rough odd increase in anticipated fee income. You've got county roads and bridges that are 32 and a half percent increase. You've got building upgrades, a 74% increase, I'm sorry, building upgrades of 45% increase. That's not the way to budget, folks. That's not budgeting. That's just spending. And I would be happy to sit down with any one of you individually or all of you as a group and talk about this, but I am absolutely blown away that even in a very high inflationary period, that we have eight and a half percent inflation year-on-year, that we have a budget that is 16.75% higher than the previous fiscal year. And I'll be honest with you, the more I look at this, the more blown away I become. But like I said, I would be happy to sit down with any of you or all of you at once and, you know, go over some things that I think can really help the budgeting process. But I would make a request that just because we have a $3 million, as this gentleman mentioned, a $3 million windfall in property tax revenue. That, your goal should not be spending. Your goal should be to adjust that to periods where, you know, whether that is an annual cap so that that property tax increase is spread out over a period of time. I would strongly support that. I know people have mentioned, you know, well, we need to give elderly people a break and, you know, on property taxes. Fact of the matter is, Wake Park County is set up geographically. You can't do that. We've got an elderly population, an aging population. If you cap property taxes, property tax increases on one demographic, the other demographics don't suffer. So you can't really do that. What you can do, though, is manage your budgets accordingly over a period of time so that that increase, so that the pain that those residents feel to have a 45% property tax increase, what you can do is manage your budgets and your spending properly so that those increases are gradual and don't hit all in one year. You're going to be put, you know, with this kind of property tax increase, people are going to be selling their homes. They're not going to be able to stay in. And that's, that's something that should never happen because of budget. Like I said, this is not budgeting, in my opinion, and I've got five years' experience doing it. This is standard.
Any other comments from the commissioners on those comments at this point? The only thing I would say is that we don't control the assessed value or how things are done with property taxes. We have nothing, we can support legislation if it comes through, if the legislature can choose to make some choices, but there's nothing we can do to change what's happening with the property valuation and the taxes right now.
But you can make the decision to cut the mill rate.
Yeah.
That's my point.
We can.
When you have an increase in property taxes on people of 45 or 50%, your goal should not be to spend every single dime that is flowing in here. That's not budgeting, folks. That's spending. That is taking every single dime you can and allocating it to, you know, 1,000 or more different categories. That's not budgeting. Budgeting is making sure that every single, every single line on him, every single apartment can do with as little as they possibly can. Your goal is not to spend as much taxpayer money as is coming in the door. Your goal should be to spend whatever taxpayer money that's coming in the door wisely. And if that means you have to, you know, it's not necessarily rebate, but if that means you have to cut the mill rate to, you know, give some of those residents a break, then that's what your goal should be.
Chair, and Lauren, I've got Lawrence here because I know that when I first was elected, right up until that point, blame it on me if you want to, right up to that point, things were running good. As soon as the year I was elected, I remember we asked for a, was it 4%? We cut 4% off the budget. And it was, it was, for several years, we were, we cut the budget down to, down to what we figured was the bare bones. A lot of things were let go because of that. And so I understand if you've got this pot of money, there is any sense of just spend it because you got it. But I do believe that where we're at right now is we're making up for those many, many years of cutting the budget and letting things, letting things go. We're getting, we're spending a lot on HVAC controls, which is a huge amount. We should have been done years ago. We kept the budget to the point where we couldn't do it. So I'm not saying that every, every increase that we have in there is based, is because of yours kind of budget, but a lot of it is.
Okay. And when was that that you came on?
I was elected in, I'm in my 10th year, so. But every year, every year for several years after that.
Right.
We were, because our evaluation was in the tank, so was the energy was in the tank, and so we were, we were cutting it.
And which, which supports my point exactly. By budgeting the way that you've got, the entire county municipal budget is dependent on the valuation of real estate. So if you have, like we had in 2008 or even longer, when you had valuations dropping and going in the tank, you had no choice but to cut the budget. Well, in those years, your mill rate should go up to balance that out. It should.
It should. That'd be legislation.
Should go up because what you're going to have is, you're not going to have those residents, those residents' taxes are going to go up a little bit because your mill rate's going up, but your residents' taxes are going to go up in accordance with whatever the increase in your budget. And let's face it, with municipal budgets, municipal budgets don't go up and down like this. Municipal budgets go up on a steady increase.
Mill rate is legislative, though.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but you guys have the ability to cut.
Yeah, but we didn't have the ability.
They may not have the ability to raise it because it's 12%. And therefore, I would absolutely, and I will happily testify in front of legislature that having a mill rate that is flexible, both to the upside and downside, is what we have to have in Wyoming. This arbitrary mill rate is, to tell you the truth, is probably the least statistically responsible thing that I've certainly seen, at least in five years of looking at it, because that's not the way you budget. So I will happily lobby the legislature and all legislators I know to have the mill rate be adjustable because you're putting yourself in a position when property values go down, you're putting yourself in a huge risk position. You gotta, you know, you gotta, you gotta lay off people. You gotta cut services. You gotta do everything and you can, you can. But if your mill rate was flexible, you wouldn't have to do that. And you wouldn't have a, have a huge break in property tax. You wouldn't have a huge cut in property taxes when those people's valuations go down. They would continue to stay in, paying the same tax rate, paying the same tax value that they were, but they wouldn't get kicked out of their homes when the office is there. So they wouldn't get a windfall, and you wouldn't get a windfall either.
Go ahead, Lawrence.
Commissioner Teal.
I'm not going to get into the mill levy because I somewhat agree, something definitely needs to be done there. But going back to some of your budget, your theory on. But going back to some of your budget, is your, your, your theory on what we're doing wrong. Supply is, supply issues have been a major problem over this last year, and I don't think you had that from five years ago, or when you were in Connecticut. And a big portion of that, almost three million dollars, is being inflated in here because of material, of material and equipment that we could not get last year. So you back that out, and we're right about where we should be.
Hmm, uh, well, I haven't, looking at the material budget or the vehicle budget specifically.
Between equipment, squad cars, and all that to carry it over, there's almost three million dollars. And you take that off that top of that, and we're right back down to where we were last year, almost plus some increase.
Right. If you use my suggestion and set up a fund.
We have a fund on equipment, and we, we watch it very closely on replacement, because there have been, at a point, and trust me, this is something I know about. Is, when you hang on to equipment too long, it starts costing you money.
Oh, yeah.
So we have a rotation based on hours, miles, whatever it is, and we, we try to keep those up to the, to re, for replacement, and, and the same on our roads. Going back to your road, I mean, we, we take traffic studies, we have, uh, we know when a, 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 a cycle of chip fog seal, chip sealing, um, crack sealing, uh, to keep those maintenance up. If you don't do the maintenance, and that maintenance does fluctuate.
Yeah.
So, and, but the biggest issue on equipment, this over, this last year, was supply chain issues. We just could not get, well, we have, I don't know how many dump trucks that were, are still out there. They're usually a six-month out, and now they're a year and a half to two years.
Right. So you had four million in the budget that didn't get spent on that equipment last year, because it wasn't available.
Not all of that four, but.
But a large portion of it, okay. Uh, but, but the thing is, your fund, despite the fact that there are supply chain issues, that you couldn't get that equipment last year, your, your fund should, you know, over a period, let's see, just like what's going on, it's about three years, okay? So your fund for your squad cars ought to fund those over a revolving three-year period. So you're not going out and buying five squad cars all at the same time. You're funding, you're, you're buying one a year. I mean, I, that's, that's how, how it should be done. May not have been able to get them last year, but the thing is, if you had funded those, if you funded those five squad cars over a five-year period, you would have been replacing one every year, and you wouldn't have been able to get one last year, not five.
Bob, let's let the sheriff, because it's his budget.
Um, on average, every year we place four invited. Okay, so we have them spread out over time, we try to manage those, where we're watching those mileage and take the ones that are costly to, maintenance on that, so every year it's forty-five cars.
Okay.
All right, so this year we ordered four.
Four.
Four. We have it received, and yes, we had rolled that money back over, and now we're gonna replace four more, which is not gonna take advantage yet, so.
Right, so that helps the budget by that much more.
Yeah, no, I, I realize that. Funding that as a portion every single year can help smooth out that, you know. And, and I, I, I appreciate the, the supply chain issues, that you couldn't get the equipment. But funding that over a multiple period of years, you know, if you're replacing five squad cars every year, then that's what's gotta be in the budget every single year, but you're revolving.
It is.
That's what we're doing, Bob, that's what we're saying we are doing. We put in five each year, last year's didn't come, or four last year, so now we have eight that we need to do this year.
Every year, right?
Yes, we do. One or two, um, and.
Creators every two years, I mean, it's the same thing.
Commissioner Tilden?
Uh, yeah, first of all, like I said, I totally agree with Lloyd, and that's pretty easy to understand. We just weren't in a position to get the equipment or the materials that we needed, so we carried that over to perfect till this year. And to piggyback off of what Commissioner Livingston was talking about, you know, this is my twelfth year as a commissioner. And in the last ten years, we've cut the overall general fund budget by approximately twenty percent. And we've always been in a position where we live within our limits. And this year, basically what we're doing, our revenue has increased, and we're playing catch-up. We've deferred a lot of stuff for our employees, which we desperately needed to do in years past, and haven't been able to do it for them. And this year, we had the money to do it, to keep the quality people that we have working in this county, to keep the county working. So basically, what we're doing is playing catch-up.
I believe we put, did we put in a, uh, employee wage increase, uh, in?
Yes.
Twenty-one?
Twenty-twenty-one, yes, we did.
Yeah.
No, no, twenty, twenty-twenty-one, we did not. Basically, in twenty-twenty-one, and Steve, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we, twenty-twenty-one, uh, we gave a one-time bonus.
That's right.
Correct.
That's, that's, that's exactly where I was talking about.
Because we weren't in a position where we felt that we could sustain any rates, so we budgeted some money for basically a bonus.
Okay, well, folks, it may take legislation from the state legislature to allow flex, more flexibility in the mill rate. But that is absolutely the fix to that, it's a lot of the fix to, to the capital equipment problem as well. If you allow flexibility to that, if you sit there and, and hammer home the fact that you can't support a budget, a municipal budget, with property evaluations going up and down the way they have. You know, that, that is crucial. And I, I mean, I can't understand why the legislature hasn't considered that, because like I said, having, having a virtual fixed mill rate is one of the most irresponsible things I've ever seen in budget. That, if that has to be fixed at the state, then every single one of you ought to be there petitioning for that, because it would help all those problems.
Okay. Comments from anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, uh, Vincent Nodder, Core nineteen, Sandbok here in Cody. Um, I want to speak to a matter, a matter of principle and, and a concern about county offices, county officers, elected officers, belonging to associations, which essentially are lobbying groups um, here in the state of Wyoming, and the taxpayers footing the bill for their associations. Uh, these lobbying groups sometimes are representing positions contrary to wishes of the people. Uh, for instance, we saw a year before last, uh, the Wyoming Sheriff's and Chiefs of Police Association, Wyoming Sheriff's Association uh, lobbied against the Second Amendment Preservation Act that had widespread, uh, widespread support throughout the state by citizens and by legislators, but through some serious lobbying uh, by that executive director, that lobbyist, uh, that bill was defeated. Once again, it comes back to the taxpayers, pay for the associations, the sheriffs, and these chiefs of police, and this lobbyist went out lobbying for something that people want. The, uh, and we saw it in the form of a letter, where all twenty-three sheriffs elected, uh, a member of that association were against that act. Then we have Wyoming County Commissioners Association and the Assessors Association. We saw two electeds, one here tonight, one downstairs, I'm not sure where he's at, uh, oppose legislation, essentially, which would have capped taxes, uh, instead. We're looking at forty-five to fifty percent increase in property taxes, and the county's gonna have a three-million-dollar increase in their budget. And then we have the County Clerks Association, another association that taxpayers are paying for these electeds to be members of, and essentially lobbying on behalf of the county clerks, not the people. Um, they've impacted matters in the state, for example, election integrity matters, uh, shutting down election sites, consolidating polling areas, and requested audits of some of the elections, and this is not in this county, and other counties. So essentially, what it comes down to is, i- if elected persons wish to be a part of an association, and I understand the importance of having an association. However, if they want to be a part of an association, they should be doing it at their own expense, not the taxpayers' expense. Because essentially, when they go out and testify on behalf of these associations, they are in fact testifying for associations, not the people in the counties that they're representing. So therefore, they should be paying for it out of their own pockets. And, and there may be some balking on that, but that they can get it as a tax rate, as a professional expense, whatever the case may be, all the part of, part of the expense of being elected. So, in closing, I, I just can't emphasize enough, these are, these items are in the budgets. Each of the offices, the electeds, are putting them in as line items in their budgets. And the taxpayers should not be footing the bill on this, especially when some of these associations are working contrary to the en, the best interest of the taxpayers who are paying for those associations. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Lauren Grosskopf, uh, Madam Chairman, commissioners, although thank you for this opportunity. Um, I remember eleven and a half years ago, when Commissioner Tillman and I came on board. Certainly, it's a venture to get to this point, and, uh, in your budget message, I think it's inclusive, when you talk about your current money available and your expenditures. Uh, it's pretty obvious that you're spending four million dollars more than your current income. And I understand about, it's from prior year, you carried forward four million last year into this year, there's projects going on that. But I think what it looks like to me, that next year, wherever the, the, uh, the commissions are, and the people that are running for commissioner, you're gonna have quite an adventure, to try to bring the spending back down to the four thousand, the four million dollar level, back down to the current levels. Because that four million dollars is the highest level, it's a cash carry for, I would look back at all the years, when we first came on board, uh, commission was right, we were spending, we were cutting money every year. I don't remember any, any years where we had an increase, that we actually had money to get raises and things, uh, we, we struggled a lot of years doing that, and I, I appreciate all of what you're sitting there, and getting to this point, how difficult it is. And, and the public doesn't understand how, how, how difficult it really is, until you're sitting with those chairs. It's much more difficult than it looks, so, um, but next year, uh, it will be a venture. Because, um, I, I understand some of the comments that came forth that, um, can't continue that way. It's not sustainable, and obviously it isn't, and I have great full faith in all of you, and potentially other people, that uh, next year will look entirely different, and you'll find a way to balance the budget, and you know, you do spend over four million this year, then you have zero cash carry for next year, and that's always a possibility, that generally never happens that way, but I have confidence that you can make that happen, so.
We hope so.
Well, as taxpayers, we'll keep that in mind. And I think the one thing that, that bothered me ever since, um, retirement, that, you know, we, we don't cap the property tax, and mine's around fifty percent less than. And I understand how that would have been a whole lot easier for us in the years past, but I'm, I'm hoping that that happens, and, and there's some kind of cap effort. And I, I know most of the commissioners are for something like that, uh, I've talked to legislators on that, and I don't see, I don't see that they have the urgency that the taxpayers have, you know, to make something like that happen. And I hope that the commissioners can, um, maybe add to that urgency with them, if that happens. Especially, um, I, I don't see my, my income going up in a few years. I think, uh, state of Wyoming is capped, my, my income, so.
Thank you.
Just a, just a quick comment. Um, I'm, I still claim to almost be new, but I've been over a year into this, so I'm still learning about the budget, and learning about seeing some signs that are coming up. Uh, you mentioned eight point six percent inflation, we're way above that. Uh, people would be happy to pay maybe eight point six more in gasoline, but they're planning a lot more than that, and our budgets that have been coming in, all of these have extremely inflated gasoline prices and oil prices, and especially road and bridge, um, just the anticipation of what's coming up. And on steel, when we hear concrete and all of that, um, we're not anywhere near eight point six, we're about at sixteen, seventeen percent more, uh, for the goods that we're spending on, and then we, we are in competition with employees too. Uh, we, we're not getting people that are wanting to work for us as much anymore, and Scott could attest to that, even just getting uh, people for public safety, so, um, this next year is gonna be not a joyride. And I think that we're gonna be looking down the barrel at some inflationary and, and, uh, depression type of, uh, numbers that are gonna be coming in, and I think this year, I think we're doing okay. But next year, it's gonna be tough, so I don't know why someone will wanna run for county commissioner.
Yes, sir. Name, name, please?
Tim Lester, sorry. Just a couple of things that I've noticed and paid attention for quite some time. I'm curious, you know, I mean, a lot of this people saw coming in twenty-twenty, when the election flipped, that's not political, people just saw this heading this direction, uh, people were paying attention. And so, you know, when it touched on the association thing, and the fact that taxpayers pay that, which we, we do. At that time, I listened, I went back and listened to the committee meetings, or the, with the legislature, when, you know, Lee speaking on behalf of the Commissioner Association testified against a cap. Now that people are hit with this huge fee, suddenly it's important, a lot of our legislators didn't want it either. I know Pat Meyer didn't want it either, but a lot of people, now that it's a crisis, now it's important. So I, I mean, sometimes you have to have foresight and see what's coming, we're not all, we don't have crystal balls, I realize that. But addressing when, when your budgets are based on property taxes, the majority of it's based on property taxes. To me, it makes a lot of sense to not try to cap it, I mean, to cap it either way, to where you're not left with a huge hole either way, because I mean, you know, if, if it crashes in a year from now, we're gonna be in an untenable posi, position, and we can't get out, it's gonna be very difficult to get out. And so, you know, to, to lobby, it wasn't lobbying on behalf of the people. Not the habit, it was lobbying on behalf of associations, because it was revenue-based, and I get it, I mean, I understand that. But to me, you know, it's, it's, it's a foresight planning thing, and that's something that could be addressed with our legislators on the village, and on not having a set, and it is a pretty arbitrary number, I mean, well, when they came up with that, it might not count, because it doesn't make sense.
Isn't there a long time?
I worked with full-size million-dollar budgets for twenty-one years. And, and I'm not saying y'all, you know, that you're not doing it, but, but I will say that every single taxpayer, right now, is going through times that's harder than that. There's families that are at risk of losing their home, that this is way more important, because they're being faced with a hit that we could have partially avoided, had we lobbied the legislator and said, hey, we need to get a cap on the upper end of this now, because this may be happening. And that didn't happen, so in the future, I hope we take that into account.
And so I'll touch base on that there, yes, I did. I did, uh, testify against that bill, but it's been brought out that I testified against a, a property tax cap. That bill, looking at the legislators were looking at it, WCCA was looking at it, that bill would not have worked, it was unconstitutional the way it was framed. I can't go into the detail, I can't pull that off the top of my head, exact language of why it wasn't gonna work, but that was the position that they came with, is that that, that particular piece of legislation wouldn't, wouldn't work. But because it was a cap on property taxes, it's been said that I, I was against caps. Uh, there, there was a lot of conversation at the legislation about what we could do, and what, what needed to be done moving forward. We supported funding the Property Tax Relief Fund. Is it enough? Probably not, but it was something. We also, there was another bill there that would, we supported that would have helped out, I believe, fixed income and, uh, fixed income folks on their taxes. They never made it out of committee either, but it, WCCA supported it. So, we realize there's something needs to be done. You know, to address Mr. Vinada's concerns about tax money going towards an association, the WCCA has lobbied and on a lot of things that have been beneficial to the counties, that they've gone to the line on, on many issues down there in legislation to do what they think is best, you know, for the counties. I don't go down, I don't wake up in the morning and think I'm gonna go to Cheyenne and see how I can screw Park County. Everything, every decision I make, I believe I'm doing in the best interest of the folks of Park County. And when the folks of Park County decide that's not the way it is, then they won't elect me. But until then, I'm gonna continue to work towards what I think is the best for Park County.
I think the other thing that we have to remember is the timing sometimes on the legislation. It happens so fast. It happens so fast in those six weeks, eight weeks. We get amendments, we get different things that come flying at us, and, and to do the research and really understand the pros and cons of that legislation and what it can or can't cause is enormous at times, depending on what subject that you're looking at and how much of it we receive. I'd love to see us be able to have all the bills presented in December and give everybody a good chance to look at it, decide what it could do for the counties or not do for the counties, and, and don't be amending and changing and changing words every three days, so that you have to reread it and figure out what it's going to do. I'm hoping that at some point, the legislature can get to a point where they can put things out there well enough for us to all understand it fast enough, that we have time to ask the public or really research some of those bills. I think the same thing happened with the, with the gun bill, if I understood my conversations with Sheriff Stewart. There were just things in it that weren't going to work for law enforcement. They needed to be reworded a little bit, but by the time you can get all that figured out and done, legislation's over. And so we need to look at that process as a state and see if there's a better way to do things, so that our public can be better represented.
The one thing on that, on the, also on that, uh, property cap tax bill, the question was, was arisen is if we, if we're going to cap and keep the, the valuation down, and this might be a question for Bob, just keep the valuations down. Do we then keep, then, do we then artificially keep it from going any lower? You know, it's so you're, you, if you understand what I'm saying. So that was one of the, the questions that came out with that.
You know, my suggestion on cap would be not in terms of valuation, but in terms of an annual increase on the property tax. So let's say you put in an annual ten percent increase. So if you had property values go up by thirty percent, you would recoup that over a three-year period. You wouldn't recoup that all in one fell swoop. So basically, and then your municipal budgets are going to have to adjust gradually. And, and, and that's really what it's all about. It's about gradual adjustment, both up and down, and that's why the mill rate, you know, shouldn't have a twelve percent cap on mill rate, because if your property valuation's dropped by thirty percent, well, guess what? You guys are going to have to cut your budget by thirty percent. And that's going to, and you've had to do it, and that's, that's going to be an untenable position. But, you know, and, and you may very well have, have that annual decrease, you know, an annual floor, if you will, of ten percent as well. So that if your property valuation drops by thirty percent, your taxes drop by ten percent, but not by, you know, by the same amount.
And that's, that was the problem with, one of the problems with this, that piece of legislation.
So. Was that it didn't have an ability to pull. Yeah. Well, believe me, I, like I said before, I am happy to talk to all of you or any of you about, about municipal budgeting and, and happy to lobby the legislature to fix the problems. The, the, to tell you the truth, legislature has put on you. I mean, I'm not, I'm not blaming you guys. I didn't want to come off as probably as critical as I sounded. But, um, you know, this is just not the, just putting, putting any municipality in a position that their finances can swing by thirty percent one way or the other is just, is, is just wrong. And you got to figure out some way to fix it. And if that, if that takes a legislature, then I'll be there pounding on the door in Cheyenne.
Okay. Um, let's go with Matt, I guess.
Yeah, my name is Matt Scott. Hi, I'm Cody. Um, and I, I'd just like to bring up the issue. I know we're talking about twelve mills, but correct me if I'm wrong, there's seventy-six mills that are collected up.
Yes, yes.
And so there's a remaining fifty-seven million dollars that we're not even talking about. And so when we talk from a county perspective, we have, we have regulation of twelve. And so the difference that the millage adjustment's going to make is rather negligible to each individual property owner. I'm not saying it shouldn't be addressed, but it's, it's, as a grand scheme, I think it's rather negligible. What I would challenge the commissioners is to, to really push on legislation, because there's so much money that's leaving this county that we don't have control of. It goes into the education system, which is important. I get that. But when we're talking about a forty percent increase, the education system got a forty percent increase as well.
Absolutely.
And so we're sitting here saying, what is that being spent on? So I would rather push on legislation and say, we would rather that not leave the county to begin with. Um, because again, I don't believe the education system really could probably justify a forty percent budget increase over this last year either. And so I know that we're only dealing with twelve percent, which is why I think it is more important to deal with at state level. And then, and then go from there. So I just, I would say that.
Thank you. Mr. Roskow, did you have additional comments?
Madam Chairman, I guess, I, you talked a lot about property tax-driven budgeting. But I, I guess I have to mention that property taxes really is only about forty percent of your revenue. So you can't, it's not fair to say that budget driven by property taxes. That's only forty percent of the total.
No, but the increase is three point eight million, three million of that is property taxes.
Right. Uh, it's not fair to judge in one year.
Well, and a few things that we didn't do, um, and we haven't decided how we're going to move forward with it, but, um, over the last few years, since I've been here, we've talked about the issues with maintenance on our buildings, and one of the things that's come up big time is the HVAC for this building and for the Public Works Building. Well, we finally got the total estimates on doing that earlier this week. And the HVAC itself is over four million, and the controls are six hundred and forty-two thousand. So trying to figure out where we're going to find and be able to do that over the next couple of years, because the system is failing. Um, we've had leaks in the ceiling in here. We've had different things happen. We know the controls are not going to continue to work. Well, we are trying to budget over time to make this happen, and it may take over two or three years. But those are some of the things that the, don't affect the public per se straight out. They're not plowing roads, and they're not chip sealing roads, but they're expenses that the county has, and we have to look at, and they are expensive. So those kinds of things are the things that we have to look at and figure out what we're going to do over time. Anything else? Anyone else? Go ahead. No, go ahead.
All right, I've got one question.
Sure.
Uh, Madam Chair, in regards to, um, maintenance and facilities, does the county have a scheduled maintenance plan for, for buildings and like more capital equipment as opposed to like machinery and stuff like that?
Um, to a point, until the commissioners say, no, you can't buy that this year. I mean, you know, we try to, to have them have a maintenance program, and that's why we meet with them.
Because as a builder, I know the firm maintenance can be very.
And that's kind of what's happening here is the years that the budget were cut, nothing, none of those things happened. We've had a leak in the roof in the Public Works Building for almost ten years, and they still haven't put the new cap on that roof. I mean, there's, there's some things that just happen through our budget that don't get done, but yes, we are trying. Yes, sir.
What's our current surplus in this year's budget?
In this year's, well, it's, it's not changing. It's thirteen million, six hundred thousand, I think. It didn't change from last year.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other public comment? Going twice. Any other public comment?
Madam Chair, I moved, we closed the public hearing.
I moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? None of those in favor? You want to post? Okay. Like to thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you for the discussion. There've been times when Mr. Ginsville was the only attendee.
Thank you for your input.